Thanks.
I'd like to call the June 19, 2012, PCOSON City School Board meeting to order. Could everybody rise and please join me in reciting the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is additions and/or modifications to the agenda. Do we have any?
We have none this evening.
Next is recognitions, and I would like to ask all the people being recognized to stay. We'll have a very short break after the recognations, recognition, sorry, and we'll be back on air after that. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Parrish.
Thank you. Well, this evening, we have with us members of the school consolidation committee who we'd like to recognize for their work. Our school consolidation committee, as many of you know, began meeting last November and met through November through May. We had numerous meetings. The meetings included looking at a lot of research, having a lot of discussion. We actually took school tours as part of one of the meetings. And then, in the end, they really helped us to make a decision about whether or not we should consolidate schools at this time. And board members, as you know, then you discussed their recommendations at our last meeting and accepted those, and now we're moving forward with those in place. So, we really wanted to take this opportunity to thank the school consolidation committee. We know it was a topic of high interest to the community, so I suspect at times, wherever you went, you probably had some folks talking to you about the school consolidation committee, and I appreciated the fact that you were so willing to bring that input forward as part of our discussion. So with that said, as I call your name, if you could please come forward so we could formally recognize you for the work. And I'd like to start first with Mary McGonigal. So congratulations, and thank you, Mary, so much for your hard work. And next is Darcy Chiapasie. Shaun Avery. Barbara Riggins. Todd Corelli. Courtney Wright. And Carrie McCormick. I'd like to also acknowledge that Henry Eyre, John Graham, and Judy Wiggins were also part of this committee. They were unable to attend tonight, but we'll be sure to get their certificates to them. So again, I really do sincerely thank you. I know how much time you put into it and how thoughtful you were in all of your responses. So thank you. You really made a difference for us in making a major decision for our school division. And again, once again, showed just how important the community support is to our schools. So thank you for that. And I am now going to head over for the next set of recognitions. If Kelly would come forward, please. June is so often both sort of a bittersweet time for us because we know lots of students are very happy to be off from school, as are many staff members, to include our teachers, but it oftentimes means for us at this June school board meeting that we have to say farewell to some folks. So we have two people this evening that we're saying goodbye to. Kelly Jazinski, who has served us so well as the school student representative to the school board for this past year. While she'll be in our school division for one more year, having hopefully what will be a wonderful senior year, she won't be joining us up here, so we just have a small token of our appreciation for all that you've done for us. And really, I think I speak on behalf of the school board and the school division. You've just done a terrific job as our student rep this year. So we will miss your reports, but we know that we will see you out and about. So, thank you so much. And next, Mr. Scott Diggs. Mr. Diggs has served on the school board for, is it five years now? And has served through quite a challenging set of years between the budget cuts and many of the other issues that we've dealt with. Mr. Diggs served as our board chair for two years consecutively and did an outstanding job in his role as the chairman and has continued to provide leadership in a variety of ways. So we are certainly very sad to see him leaving. He has provided tremendous support to the school division as a whole during the past five years, as well as to the school board. And I have to speak personally, the support that you've provided me and the trust that you put in me when you helped to select me for the school division will always be remembered by me. So I thank you for that, both on a personal note, but also as a superintendent, for what you've done for our students and for our staff. And I say I would speak on behalf of the school board for what you've done with the school board. We've been very fortunate to have you with us for the last five years. I know that you'll enjoy having a little more time back with your family, but not to worry, I'm sure we'll be calling you for something in the future because there's always a committee, as these folks can tell you, to be had. So sincerely, we thank you, and this is just such a small token for the countless hours that you've put into our school division in the last five years. So really, truly, thank you for everything.
All right, we're going to take a short break, and we'll be back on the air in just a few minutes.
Let's get on our resume, too, so do well.
Time will take care of it.
That would be good.
Girls completing their hair.
There you go, that's true.
At least it'd be above. A big, Rob, do the big red white polka dot.
Mickey Mouse bow. Minnie Mouse bow.
He's in there.
All right, next on the agenda is presentations and reports. First, we have Linda Bangert from the gifted advisory board.
Good evening, Vice Chairperson Sidner, members of the school board, and Dr. Parrish. My name's Linda Bangert, and I am currently the Gifted Education Advisory Committee's Vice Chairperson. It's my pleasure to offer you this evening a brief summary of the Gifted Education Advisory Committee's activities during this last school year. Our board consists of parent and faculty representatives from each of the primary, elementary, middle, and high schools, under the supervision of Dr. Mike Cataldo. We have met approximately six times this year and have focused our meetings on the growth of language arts, math, and science programs at the middle school, as well as on curriculum and class options available to our high school students. Our local plan has been modified in order to meet the state's new guidelines. It's now available on the PCOSON City Schools webpage. Included in that plan is a procedure for transitioning out of the gifted education program, if that becomes necessary for individual students. Also, at this time, we are conducting a survey of the high school students regarding their participation in Governor's School for Math and Science. Our goal is to provide suggestions for making the interface between PCOSON High School and the Governor's School smoother. Ms. Vicky Wismer of the Governor's School presented a comprehensive overview of the application and selection process related to admission to the Governor's School. Dr. Cataldo is now compiling the survey data, which will be presented to the committee in the fall. This year, we also held our biannual gifted symposium, which is a forum for presentations and discussions on the needs and characteristics of gifted learners, and it was a successful endeavor. We had approximately 50 parents attend, provided childcare with the help of some of our students, and had a variety of presenters and topics from which to choose. The high school counselors were on board to assist with information regarding honor societies. Dr. Fithian spoke with regards to competitive college admissions, and some of our board members presented programs on identification for gifted education, summer programs, and what to expect in grades one through eight. Our evaluation surveys were overwhelmingly positive, so we're pleased with that. One of our continued goals as a board was to improve publicity and visibility of the committee. As in the past, one of our board members was present at each of the school's open houses at the beginning of the year, and flyers were distributed to interested parents. Word of mouth continues to be our best source for membership, and with the help of Dr. Cataldo, you, the district staff, we hope to grow in numbers in the future. We look forward to continued collaboration with the PCOSON City Schools staff and administrations as we broaden our horizons in meeting the needs of our gifted learners. We welcome you and our colleagues to join us at any of our meetings, and we thank you for your continued service and support. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda, for that. All right, next is our financial update with Mr. Bowen.
Good evening, Vice Chair Sidner, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. In the finance report this evening, I just want to provide you some updates with some -- to some ongoing activities we've had. Last Friday, we've completed our benefits enrollment for the next school year. If you recall, back in May, I mentioned this was the first time that we had had an enrollment period this early. In past years, our benefits enrollment period was coordinated for when teachers returned to school back in August. But as you can imagine, there's a lot of things that are going on at the schools with professional development, just a meeting with parents, meeting with students, back-to-school night, departmental meetings, faculty meetings, that when you added benefits enrollment, it often added to the stress level. So the staff members recommended or suggested to us if we could find a different enrollment period, and we took that to the benefits committee, and the benefits committee supported that suggestion. And so I'm happy to say that that process has been completed, and we had very few problems, very successful. The finance department is currently working on the transition of closing out the fiscal year 2012 and opening fiscal year 2013. This is one of our busiest times of the year. This process will continue through mid-August, and at which point we'll close our books, and then we'll coordinate activity with the auditors. The audit has begun. The auditors met with finance staff at the end of May, and we provided them with just a significant amount of information and documentation, and they'll do a lot of pre-audit work. And then they'll be visiting with us periodically throughout the summer, and then, once we do close out our books for 2012, they will then schedule to return with us permanently and to return with the city. It's a coordinated audit, and they will be with us until that audit is completed. And to end on a high note, not that working with the auditors is not a high note, but I said, we're going to end on a higher note, just today, staff met with our insurance representative with VML. And we do this once a year, and we look at our current policy and current coverages, and we look at also our claims. And I will have to tell you that our increase for next year was 1%, and that's extremely good for a school division. We were commended by VML on our excellent claims experience that we've had across all areas, to include transportation and workers' comp. And this is just a testament to all those that are involved. Our HR coordinator, Debbie Bunting, and Mr. Pat -- and Mr. Pappas, who coordinate our safety programs for staff, the building principals who reinforce those safety activities at the school, and then to the staff members who abide by and observe those safety practices. And just to give you an example of one of the many programs that they offer us, VML is offering their latest program is Where the Rubber Meets the Road. And Mr. Pappas will be attending the training in the coming months, and once he receives that training, he will be coming back and training his bus drivers. And once all of the bus drivers have received these, the latest safety practices, then the school division will receive a $600 premium credit, and that will be a permanent credit. So, just exciting things that are happening. This is great news, and we're doing great things. So that's my finance report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any questions?
One question. First, let me say, I know I'm sure the teachers appreciate the reduced stress that will be coming in the fall, but can -- do you have any feel for how the tax revenues are projecting? Are they moving along as projected, or up or down? Have we heard any of the latest?
Very good question, because the information came out, I believe it was Friday. The state is reporting that the sales tax for through June 30 is going to come in just a little lower than what was estimated. I think statewide, that number's three and a half million, so what that means for PCOSON is very little. It's not going to have a material effect on our revenue for this year. But what we have seen in past years is that the final numbers have been actually higher, and we've gotten -- we've received this June 30 surprise where we've had, you know, $20,000 or $30,000 extra in sales tax revenue. We will not have that this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Next is our operations update with Mr. Pappas.
Good evening, Vice Chair Sidner, school board, Dr. Parrish. In the area of operations, we've turned a new page. We've only got nine weeks before school starts, and we've got a lot to get done. In the area of custodial services, we're already busy stripping and waxing floors. You can go into the schools and see how the teachers, with the help of their principals, were able to clear the way for the custodial staff to do all that deep cleaning. Also, as a function of our new custodial contract, one of the side benefits was they have agreed to, and it's starting to roll in, all the new heavy equipment, the burnishers and the floor stripping devices. Very excited about getting all that new equipment to help us do a better job in maintaining our schools. In the area of transportation, there's a flurry of activity happening right now, as we are still getting last-minute entries to our summer school program. We're developing the routes, figuring out who's riding, where the stops have to be, and we're going through that. That all starts Monday. Soon as that ends, we've begun the process of rolling over students that graduate from the primary school to the elementary and graduate from the elementary to the middle and so on, and then graduate out. We no longer have to pick those students up. So that process entails a lot of work going through and figuring out where new stops need to be, where stops don't need to be. But our basic stop structure, our permanent stops, stay the same, but that process begins very shortly. In the area of maintenance, of course, we have our usual preventive maintenance program. In addition to that, we have a surge of work orders that we always get at the end of the school year, but we're doing other projects, from painting to lighting enhancements, some roof repairs, and repurposing spaces. By way of example, we'll be creating some new instructional spaces to include making a bathroom handicapped accessible from the old shop area. Additionally, we'll be doing some very necessary modernization of a few bathrooms at PHS and PMS. And lastly, our stimulus-funded tennis project is on its next-to-last phase. Equipment's moved into place to begin applying the surf -- the final surface, and then the colors and the lines, and then putting up the nets and repairing the fence, and we'll be ready to play tennis in about three weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Any questions? Thank you. All right, and lastly, we have our instructional update with Dr. Revia.
Good evening, Vice Chair Sidner, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. As Dr. Parrish alluded to earlier, June is oftentimes the time of the year when we're closing things out and also, in many ways, beginning and preparing within only nine weeks till school being open, as Mr. Pappas just said. So tonight, I wanted to share with you some things that are wrapping up for the school year, as well as something that is beginning. I'm going to start with summer school. We are in full swing, trying to make sure that we have contacted the parents of students who've been invited to summer school in K-8. Those students have received mailings and/or phone calls from their administrators or other staff at each school, and I would like to encourage all parents, if you've been contacted, to have your children attend summer school, please, if it is all possible, have your children attend, because it really gives them the extra support that they need in order to be successful. Our summer school teachers have been identified, they're getting their lesson plans put together, their materials gathered. Dr. Cataldo and Jennifer Ramanelli are very busy pulling all those materials together, and Mrs. Feltman has been working with our special needs families and our special education teachers for extended school year services. So all of the K-5 and extended school year instructional support this summer will be held at the primary school. Those students who are middle school students in the summer school program and/or high school students who are taking credit-bearing classes will be attending our high school, and obviously, the same sort of activities are going on there. If a parent of a high school student is interested in our high school programs, the information is on our website, and it's been there for quite some time. And Dr. Cataldo was very helpful, I believe, about two months ago in providing a summer school update to the school board, as well as the community, and we've had a very good response. So all in all, we have a summer school program that's actually K-12. Some of it is to provide instructional support, some of it is for credits, either new credits or repeat, if a student needed to go back and get some extra support, say in algebra or geometry. But if anybody has a question about summer school, we encourage parents and students to contact their school. The school administration will be able to respond to their questions. So that's a new program, not new, obviously, to this year, but new for us in June to get kicked off, and I'm very excited that that will extend through June and July, and then the credit-bearing courses will extend through August. A program that's actually coming to intermediate closure is our reading program, and you know that we were very fortunate to receive the grant from the Department of Defense Education Activity, and this has been a very busy year for the elementary and primary schools. The staff receiving extensive professional development, our reading committee meeting, and actually developing our new K-5 balanced literacy program. So I know that you're going to hear a lot about that in the coming years. So we -- the committee has met, has developed a model, the teachers have reviewed the materials. The materials are actually on view or are available to the public to be viewed in the school board office upstairs this week. Our model includes reading, writing, and word study components, so our K-5 teachers are pretty excited about implementing this next year. Their work was facilitated not only by Dr. Rozelle and Dr. Gregory, who I believe you've heard about, who've been from William &amp; Mary, we also were able to work with Dr. Sarah Miller, who is a reading specialist and also a professor at Longwood University, who came in and facilitated some of our work. So we've been really fortunate to have outside experts, as well as capitalizing on the expertise of our teachers, to develop a new model. So the professional development will continue next year. Once we have the approval of the school board for the new materials, we're going to get those ordered, get those in. We'll have professional development from the vendors to work We'll have professional development from the vendors to work with the teachers. So, there is a lot of exciting things that are gonna be going on in our K-5 arena in our primary and elementary schools next year. And I know that you're gonna keep your ears close to the ground because I think you're gonna hear a lot about it. The teachers are very excited. So, I would like to commend Ms. Butler and Mrs. Wood both as the principals at the primary and elementary school for their leadership because this has been a huge project for us to undertake and they've shepherded it well through their staff. And I appreciate what I know will be their ongoing leadership as this continues to be deployed. And just remember, those grant funds are with us for another two years, so they're gonna continue to help us in providing significant support that otherwise, we probably wouldn't be able to provide at the level we are because of our budget cuts, but that $324,000 is sure coming handy. So, that's my report.
Any questions for Dr. Revia? All right. Thank you, Dr. Revia. All right. Next up is our consent agenda, which is a long one, so bear with me. First, we have A, approval of minutes of May work session enclosed, B, approval of financial reports enclosed, C, approval of personnel action enclosed, D, authorization to dispose of surplus equipment, list enclosed, E, authorization for PHS to apply for membership with the Virginia High School League for school year 2012 through 2013, enclosed, F, authorization for the superintendent to execute a lease agreement between the Peninsula Metropolitan YMCA and the Pecosin City School Board for the continued use of Pecosin Primary School for a before and after-school care program, reading file enclosed, G, authorization for the superintendent to execute a contract with Airmark to continue to provide food service to Pecosin City Public Schools, reading file enclosed, and H, authorization to accept and expand funds as outlined in attached request, request enclosed. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Pat, can you poll the board?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Diggs?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Sidner?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of five to zero.
All right. All right. Next on the agenda is other matters for consideration. First up is consideration of approval of minutes of May regular meeting, enclosed. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Sorry?
Second?
Second, I'll second.
All right. Pat, could you poll the board?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Diggs?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Sidner?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of five to zero.
All right. Next is B, consideration of approval of the appointment of student representative to the school board for school year 2012 and 2013, and I'll hand that over to Mr. Hux, who is our chair for the selection committee.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. We are pleased to announce Ms. Jessie Spencer as the appointee to serve as student representative to the school board for the upcoming year, and we're proud to have Ms. Spencer and her mother, Ms. Spencer, here with us tonight.
So, do I have a motion to approve Jessie Spencer as student rep for next year?
Motion, we approve Jessie Spencer as our student rep next year.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right. Ms. McDowell, can you poll the board, please?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Mr. Diggs?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cast?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Sidner?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of five to zero.
All right. And lastly, C, consideration of first reading of policy revisions, reading file enclosed. Dr. Parrish?
Yes. Tonight, we're bringing to you the first reading of policy revisions. There are, I believe, 14 revisions in here. 12 of those are specifically as a result of the work of the General Assembly this past year. As you may remember, each year at this time, we bring these changes to you. Our school board attorney works with us in detail to make sure that our policy aligns with any legislative changes that were passed by the General Assembly during the course of their work in the winter and spring. So, you will note a number of changes. I've provided you with a copy and you'll see the marked-up changes that we're bringing forward to you as part of first reading. Please note that two of the changes that we're bringing to you are to better align us with our practices. One involves employee notification to the superintendent of criminal charges filed against the employee. We do get notified, especially by our local police department, when this occurs, but this is formalizing that we're requesting that employees do notify that of those issues. And the second one is we just found, it's been in there for a long time, but every time you look at it, you see it. We found a duplication that was sort of contradictory in your policy tied to tuition, so we're just asking that we remove one paragraph and let the paragraph that actually represents what our current practice is standard in policy. So, those are the changes that we're bringing to you this evening. We will bring it back for second reading at your August meeting and ask that evening that you actually vote on the policy changes, which means they will be in place when we start school in September. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Parrish on that item?
Yes. Do the changes incur any additional costs to us, either implementation or the attorney revisions?
The attorney revisions do because we do pay for our attorney to do the work with us, so we do see, incur a cost with that. As a result of the policies, I don't know that there are gonna be any direct cost increases as a result of them. One of them that does talk a little about dual enrollment may impact us eventually in the end as we look at programming, but otherwise, most of them are fairly budget-neutral. Not to say that everything the General Assembly's done in the last six months is budget-neutral, but in terms of the policy ones, they, for the most part, are, including the two that we're actually requesting to bring forward.
The attorney's fees fairly reasonable?
Yes. We've worked with him. He was actually in place before I came for a number of years, and he is reasonable and has done excellent work for us in a number of issues.
In my limited amount of time, I keep seeing unfunded, I used to say mandates or changes, and we incur the costs and I worry about instruction.
Yeah. No, you're right. I mean, we do have to expend money in some other areas other than instruction.
Anybody else? All right. All right. With that, we'll move to the next item is public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right. And next is communications and/or other matters by school board and our superintendent. We'll start with Dr. Parrish.
Great. I just wanna take this opportunity to thank everybody for their hard work this year, teachers, our principals who are here with us this evening, all staff members. I think we've had a very successful school year. I know graduation went very well, so thank you to Mr. Wright and his staff, but also for everybody that helped move our children, those graduating seniors from kindergarten all the way through. So, it was a, it was a good year for everybody and looking forward to another successful school year next year. Obviously, we did lots of testing in the spring, right up until that last week of school. We were still doing SOL testing, so you know when we come back in our meetings in August and September, we'll be providing you with a lot of data as the scores slowly start to come in, but the state doesn't finalize those scores for us until we get into August and September. So, we're getting, be getting that data back to you at that time. I do wanna take this opportunity, once again, acknowledge the work that Kelly did with us as a school board member and Mr. Diggs, but I also wanna take this opportunity to acknowledge the fact that the person sitting to my left here is sitting there for the last time. She will be leaving us, as we all know, to accept, to start a superintendency job in Stanton. She has worked tremendously hard for us for almost four years now. I think she has made a tremendous difference for our students and for our staff and our parents. I know on a personal note, she's made a tremendous difference for me and made this job fun for the last four years, so she will certainly be sorely missed. We wish her well. We have no doubt she's gonna be a successful superintendent in Stanton, and hopefully she'll come back to visit because she'll wanna see water again at some point. So, with that said, we do wish her the best of luck and we'll be sharing some other niceties with her as we move through the coming days. So, thank you. Those are my comments for this evening.
All right. Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. My compliments to all those involved with the eighth grade graduation and the high school graduation this past weekend. I thought those ceremonies went very well, were very enjoyable. Appreciate everybody's contributions, Dr. Revia, Scott, and Kelly. It's been a pleasure serving with y'all. It's been an honor and a privilege for me. Thoroughly enjoyed it. Best wishes in your future endeavors. I'd also like to recognize Mr. Joe Cotamillo, does a fine job for us with the technical support. Thank you, Joe. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Diggs?
Thank you. I don't normally do this, but I decided to actually write it out so that I wouldn't forget some comments that I'd like to make as my parting shot here. It's not that kind of, I shouldn't say shot, I'll just jump into it. First of all, I'd like to start off by thanking the city council for providing me the opportunity to serve the city of Pecos in this capacity. It has been a true privilege to work with so many good people involved in Pecosin City Public Schools. During the last five years, I've been blessed to serve with 15 different board members, all of which put the needs of the children first. We've had many discussions on priorities, methodologies, and different philosophies, yet we've never come to an issue that has ended at an impasse. I wanna thank both the past and the current board members for their time and involvement to continue the excellence of education in Pecosin. I've been witness to a group of individuals that have worked together for one purpose, providing the children of Pecosin the foundation needed to empower all students to develop their full potential, to lead lives of meaning and purpose, and to become contributing members of their ever-changing local and global communities. To the teachers, school board staff, and all others involved in Pecosin schools, thank you very much for your service. I've been part of over 1,000 seniors graduating from Pecosin, including two nieces, two nephews, my own two children. I was honored to be able to participate as one of the board members that selected our current superintendent, a process that I think has worked out better than anyone could have imagined. Unfortunately, in the last five years, I've also had to be involved in over $4 million being cut from the budget that was already the lowest cost per pupil in the state, yet through sound leadership, this tremendous impact to the Pecosin schools has been managed with wisdom and integrity. I have full confidence that Pecosin City Schools will continue in the rich history of excellence. It has to, given the level of excellence of those that are involved. I'll close with the final thought for the board. Ralph Marsen has said, "Excellence is not a skill, it's an attitude." So, I encourage you all to always strive for excellence. It has been my great privilege to be involved in Pecosin City Public Schools these last five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Melton?
Well, that's gonna be tough to follow. First of all, I would like to thank the teachers for another fine school year delivered and Dr. Revia and I had the privilege of attending the New Horizons Regional Education Center CTE graduation two Saturdays ago, and I was able to give out a few scholarships, the Norton Memorial Scholarship, and was able to hand out some achievement awards for academic excellence. Last Thursday, I was able also to attend in Richmond, the Virginia CTE Creating Excellence Awards, and is recognizing outstanding CTE programs across the state of Virginia, and our advisory committee participates in that event by selecting the different award winners from the, across the state. Always a good event. And I'll close with thanking Dr. Revia because from her, I learned about the three D's, data-driven decisions. And I commend her because I, just the three D's, I've figured it out, down, sitting down here. But I will certainly miss the presentations at our work sessions because it is truly about the data, and the data goes back to support decisions we need to support the children. So, thank you, Dr. Revia.
All right. Mr. Cast?
Thank you. I'm gonna repeat some of the things that have been said already, but I think they're important. I'd like to thank Kelly for the great job she has done, and Jessie, welcome, and I know you will follow in her shoes and do a wonderful job. And the consolidation committee, I can't imagine, maybe a tougher committee, and some of the folks said more gratifying committee. There's deep roots in this community and with our facilities and our kids, and they did a wonderful job, so thank you for that. Congratulate all the students. At the graduation, I was so impressed at the, at the young people and they, I was very proud to represent them and for them to represent us, and they'll do a great job at their, their next level of education. And Scott, I have watched for the last five years as a, as just a citizen, and you've done an incredible job and helped lead this school board, and thank you so much for that. And Linda, congratulations. I was at work and I got a call from a reporter, and normally, it's not really positive, and then when she told me what it was about, I was pleased to talk to her. So, congratulations and good luck to you. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. I would also like to thank Scott. It's been a pleasure for the past three years working with you on the school board. And Dr. Revia, you also, your, your, your passion and professionalism shows every day, and I'm sure you will do very well, so I thank you for all your service here. So, and I would also, the consolidation committee, say again, thank you to them. I think my three years as a membered on the board, I've never been asked about anything as much as that, so they were, it was much anticipated, their work, and I wanna thank them for their work. And also, Kelly, she did a great job, and Jessie, we look forward to working with you as well. And also, I would like to thank the city council for reappointing me for another three years, so. All right. With that, we will move into, the next item is material for board review. Do we have any?
No, we do not.
Okay. With that, we will move into adjournment. We will now go into our work session. The agenda contains student handbook changes, new teacher evaluation system, and the organizational meeting on July 5. And then after that, we will have a closed meeting for the discussion of personnel matters. And with that, the meeting's adjourned.